I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Any public comment from the board this evening? Just a couple of announcements. The first is to let everyone know that the Citizens Party Caucus is going to be Monday, March 17th, 2014, at the Turkey Hill Middle School Cafeteria. And it will begin at, does not give me the time here, but I believe it will begin at eight o'clock, I believe is when it usually starts?
Usually, yeah.
Okay. I believe it's eight o'clock. I will announce it again next week. The offices to be filled this year that are coming up for election, there are two selectmen seats, each for three years, two Board of Health members, each for three years, a Board of Assessor member for three years, sewer commissioner for three years, two school committee members for three years, park commissioner for three years, commissioner of trust funds for three years, cemetery commissioner for three years, two library trustees for three years, planning board member for five years, and housing authority member for five years. If you are interested in running for any of those positions, you can attend the Citizens Party Caucus and look to get the caucus nomination, or you can get nomination papers and get enough signatures to sign them. You can do that even if you don't win at the caucus meeting, but you can go either route. Again, Citizens Party Caucus, Monday, March 17th, 2014. Also a reminder that the Boys and Girls Club is having their Are You Smarter Than Our Sixth Graders game show fundraiser. That will be Friday, March 7th, at the Lunenburg High School Auditorium. Doors will open at 6:00 PM and the games will start at 7:00. They are looking for sponsors at all different levels, people to sponsor questions, people to sponsor sixth graders, they're looking for teams to be play, to play in the event. All questions should be directed toward the director of the Boys and Girls Club, Michelle Beliza, at the Boys and Girls Club right here on Main Street. Any public comment from the public?
How are you? This is a pretty exciting time for, I think-
For people who don't already know you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Dave Blatt, Chairman of the Green Community Task Force here in Lunenburg. I was before you last week telling you about the grants and what we're going to look to do with the money. I'm here this week to show you the big check. This is pretty exciting. We just received our Green Community Certificate from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. The local area, it was ourselves, um, oh, boy, oh, boy, now I'm blanking, ourselves, Westford, and, now, what did I get?
Ashby.
Ashby, thank you. Okay. And out of those three, we did receive the largest grant, so I was pretty excited about that. Along with the big check, we receive, which I'm hoping we can put up here in Town Hall, we receive our certificate signed by the, our illustrious governor, and also the next, I guess the next thing for the task force is to decide where we want to put, display our four signs, just showing us as a green community. So this was pretty exciting, got to go to the presentation on Monday in Westford and meet some really good folks, and, I guess I'd bring back the exciting news of our designation as a green community. So I'd like to give, present the plaque and the check to the board for their, for their work tip on this thing.
With the town manager of the DPW.
Thank you, sir.
If anybody didn't see it, let me know.
And we'll work on, yeah, we'll work with the group and the DPW on the four signs, I guess, and let you guys know.
Do you want to leave those with us, or did you want to keep them?
Let me leave three, actually, let me leave three, and I'm going to want to bring one to my next meeting.
Oh, sure.
Show the crowd. Maybe we'll display it in, maybe we'll display it in the Ritter as one of the, designate a room for ourselves there.
I want to thank you for attending that meeting. Unfortunately, none of the board could attend, which it was Monday.
Monday, yes.
And I apologize for that, I would have loved to be there, but I'm glad that you and Mr. Londa could attend and be part of the ceremonies along with our, our state representative, Benson, who was there also, so.
Yes.
Again, thank you for the good work, and I'm sure it would be put to good use here with that list you gave us last week.
Excellent, and we're looking forward to it. Thanks, guys.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You, too. Any public comment from the public? No appointments. The first item on the agenda, update on mass broadband project, the IT director had a family issue we had to attend to, so that will be put on for next week. Which is 2/18. So we will go to review and revise the charge of the Building Reuse Committee. So last week, we discussed what state the Building Reuse Committee should be in, and what their purpose or recharge should be, and I guess I would defer to Mr. Toll, who chaired that committee, and what his thoughts are, and we can take the conversation forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The five tasks that were given to the Building Reuse Committee and subbullets therein are the first kind of page of, of the presentation that you have in front of you. Number one was to identify space requirements for potential combined municipal operations. Number two was to identify costs to convert municipal space, either renovation or demolition. Number three is to identify the five to 10-year capital cost to retain existing buildings, for example, Town Hall, Ritter, Eagle House, et cetera. Number four was to identify appropriate options for sale or lease of facility, housing, office, commercial of those facilities, considering the proximity to the schools, the library, and the town center. And finally, to identify potential reuse market for any building emptied by the consolidation with value appraisal to help quantify the revenue and defray the costs of any consolidation. I'd like to declare, as I did at our presentation to the board, that the committee believes that we've achieved those tasks, and with the presentation that was made prior to the, prior to the vote on the new school, feel that we've kind of accomplished the original task, and I think that the discussion at hand is what next, if you will. The last two slides in the presentation talk to next steps and specific open items. And they talk to communicating the findings to the town, which I believe we've done and continue to have available if, if anyone wants to address them, or find out what, what the Building Reuse Committee accomplished or explored, to develop a go-to-market plan for any marketable properties, to create an RFP, or Request for Proposal template, for discussion with current stakeholders, to develop consolidation plans for any municipal functions and Town Hall renovation, and then to make bottom-line cost and investment decisions. I believe I would group those next steps into kind of three different areas for discussion. One is kind of in the real estate and development arena that would say, as we identified, we would, we believe that the appropriate group of expertise should discuss what possibilities exist for underutilized property owned by the town, and develop either a real estate plan to sell that property, or market that property, or a plan to request proposals by developers, et cetera, to use that place, those spaces. I would also indicate that in some of the spaces, predominantly the TC Passios building, we've, we've already had some interest from various groups like the Fitchburg Collaborative, and even a kind of a last-minute entry that the, the group that was in to speak to us last week about the senior housing wanted to at least consider that property as a, as a possible alternative to the old primary school, which they're currently working on. But in addition, we, we believe that we could explore other possibilities for marketing or developing that property. In order to make that happen, the next kind of major grouping would be to work on kind of cross-functional plans within the town with the various town departments to determine if we were going to consolidate town functions, predominantly the land use groups that are currently in the Ritter, if that were to continue as a marketable property, you know, how that group would be consolidated into other municipal buildings, and, and the one in the proposal was to renovate Town Hall. And then finally, the, the decision in terms of what expenditures or investments the town chooses to make in order to make both the renovation and/or consolidation, and/or the marketing of the, the excess properties, which I believe is kind of ultimately a, probably a selectman and FinCom kind of discussion, but, you know, who else should be part of, of those discussions? So I think we come now to, to say, you know, does that, do those tasks best get accomplished by the current Building Reuse Committee, or should we be looking either at forming other task groups, or assigning those duties to people whose, you know, who have other responsibilities within the town, such as financial, land use, or whatever? I also believe that there's quite a bit of work that needs to be kind of done cooperatively between the school committee in terms of, you know, turning the, any underutilized buildings over to the town, the planning and, and perhaps zoning group to determine, you know, what needs to be done in order to package those underutilized facilities and, and market them. You know, we know where they are, what type of zoning and planning is required to make that feasible. Certainly, the Historic Commission would want to check in to the, you know, on the extent that some of those buildings are or could be considered historic. And then, and then the expertise of the actual, whether it be legal, or real estate, or financial in terms of actually marketing, if that, if that's the case. There is a timeline along this. Some of those buildings could in fact be marketed quite rapidly, some of them would kind of depend on construction of the new school, and, and we'd have to work at kind of a timeline along, depending on when, when those properties become underutilized or excess. So they're the tasks at hand, and I think the discussion we, we wanted to begin tonight is who to, who to best address those, those issues.
Anybody want to start the discussion? Thank you for that recap. I think that was, I think it was accurate, and I think that, I mean, you clearly explained where you, as a member, as the chair of that committee, believe we are at this point, and what the tasks are, so.
I would say, there's definitely a need for an ongoing committee. I don't know if it'll be the exact membership we currently have. You know, as I think about it, we start looking at who's going to be involved, it ends up kind of being an overlap. It's a lot of repeat, you know, planning board, Board of Selectmen, historical, business owners, maybe some realtors, that type of thing. Again, breaking it down, you did a fine job doing it. I mean, we've got to look at, if we're going to make best use of this building, we're going to consider bringing Ritter activities back into this building. We've got to see where we can free up space. Records management's going to be a huge part of that, and I think we need to have the town clerk, obviously, she's, she's primarily responsible for most of the records we retain. So we'll need to make sure she's involved, identify what we currently have in this building, where we have it in this building, and alternative locations. You know, what leaps to mind, of course, is the Public Safety Building, there's a lot of space available on the second floor, which with a well-defined, well-planned record management program, we could make a lot of use of that building, get a lot of the files out up here, both still, it's got to be in a, in a way we can obtain them or access them as needed. And then really looking at what do we want to define, who do we want to target to maybe take over the Passios when it's available? Find some markets, define some potential reuses, and kind of target the RFP to them. So I kind of see a continuation, essentially, of the same group, and then expanding it with different parts and pieces of it.
I don't disagree, Mr. Matthews. I guess, I guess my, my thought is that the original charter was pretty broad, and we wanted to have the viewpoint of, of all those different constituencies. I think as we look at each of these more defined tasks, it may be more important to have people with expertise that either resided on the building reuse, or we need to go get. But, for instance, you know, the, the Historical Commission needs to focus in on the historic nature, but does, do they need to have a full-time player for the whole process? The planning board certainly has to help us with the zoning issues to remarket, but do they need to be involved in records management? Records management, I think, was one of the opportunities that we did see. Currently, each of the, the individual town departments feels very strongly that they need to keep a certain amount of records kind of real close by, but as a result, that, that creates 10 different places where records are stored, and, and with a well-managed, perhaps even, you know, outsourced project of, of records management, there is some space, and you accurately point out the, the Public Safety Building as, as, as one good alternative. I guess to tie, though, to, to, my, my only concern is to tie up a member of the existing board to do all that work, as opposed to utilize their special, special skills is, is where I would, I would kind of push back. But I, but at the same token, I think they're all ready and, ready and willing to do whatever we ask them to do, they were excited about the task.
I guess, I just want to make sure that we have a central committee, subcommittee, that's in place to kind of oversee it and tie it all back together, because this can get scattered really quickly.
Mm-hmm.
But you're right, I mean, there's, there's small pieces for different people.
And I almost think that there'll be certain tasks that we define that are really kind of the day job of people that work for the town, and, and maybe they're not best accomplished by a task force, they're just something that, that we may ask the town, you know, the town to go a particular department on, or something of that nature.
Obviously, you know, the town manager's not here tonight, but obviously, that we will have certain resources of the town for those tasks at our disposal, at, you know, as long as we get it cleared with her. So if there are, clearly identified that somebody in the town needs to do this, not a committee, or not a volunteer, that certainly we can do that. I agree with Mr. Matthews, which, I mean, which you agreed with kind of too, in that I, I think if we can, I think the first thing I'd like to know is, how many people on that reuse committee are willing to go forward? Because it was a good diversity, and maybe there are some membership changes that need to be on there. But my primary concern in the whole thing is that, as Mr. Matthews alluded to, is that you don't, you, I don't want to give the task, the, the committee a task that's so large that it just kind of gets lost and nothing happens. My focus is really, especially after hearing the senior housing, the Eagle Housing that we were talking about with the old primary school, is Passios. Passios is the one that will be vacant, we don't need another one being five, six years vacant. If we have opportunities to either use it internally, or sell it, or market it, then I think we really need to do that before it gets to the point where people start really like, okay, it's been left alone for this many years, now how much more stuff do I have to do to make it viable? I think the other things, I mean, the record management is something that really needs to be an internal discussion first, about how the town manager, and the town clerk, and all the other departments need to access it, and then we look at what resources and space we have. I don't think that has to necessarily come from the Building Reuse Committee. That probably should be driven internally, because it really is, public records is something that's an internal resource use, number one, and also, it's subject to state law about what we have to keep and how long, so we have to meet those requirements. So those are basically being driven by things outside of what the committee should be able to decide. I think getting real estate people and getting business people in, involved is important. Obviously, the most, just off the top of my head, the most attractive prospects would be if somebody wanted to buy the building, so we didn't have to worry about anything else, like, here's the building, you do what you need to do. But we also want to make sure, because it is a central building, a central piece of real estate in town, that we, we work with, within the master plan, and what the campus and town center vision is in the master plan, and work with the planning board on that. So that particular building alone really has a lot of people who need to be involved. Do you know how many people would be willing to continue on that, or have you even broached it with them?
I believe, I believe all the members want to know what the next step is, and would make their decision based on what it is we're asking them to do, and how long that, how long a commitment, and how often that would meet. Nobody has expressed a desire to, to not go forward, you know, but they, they are curious as to what, what it entails. And I will certainly take the action item to poll the group and see who's interested, if, if there is a role.
That would be very helpful.
Yeah.
I think that one of the things they're going to be asking, and one of the things that this board should provide, is prioritization of what, of all the things you identified, of all the buildings you identified, of all the possibilities and permutations that are available, which ones do we feel would be the most achievable, that are the most fruitful, and focus on those before anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I think this is going in the right direction, and I'd like the, the three different focuses that Mr. Toll came up with. Real estate and development, we have the ability to, instead of necessarily request for proposal, you could request of interest, and find out what's out there for people with the three different buildings. Part of the concept was, is that by either eliminating the cost, or possibly getting money from the sale, that that would go to help pay for the renovations of this building, renovation addition. So I see it as a, what can we do with those three buildings going as one committee? And then what would go on here may need to be a separate committee, may need to be similar to the school building committee, but the Town Hall building, which brings in the various people. So that one doesn't have to be right away, but I think that if we get an idea of what other people might be willing to do with the other buildings now, that gives us time to figure out the timing for who would have to move when. The fact is, the, the school construction's going to be at least two years, so the school's not going to move out of the building initially, but if we get the planning started done, it could happen all at the same time when, when they do move out. So I would suggest that, that, that we ask Mr. Toll to go back to the committee and have them possibly propose a, a change of charge to us, incorporating the, the real estate development component, being the, I think, the most important at the, at this point. Because I think what we do with the plans and the expenditures will naturally follow, as you say, with the town manager, and the finance committee, and others than that. And then if they come back with a charge, then, then we can then actually adopt and officially say, go forward.
So I'm hearing kind of a consensus that we don't want to disband or discharge the committee. I think that, even the title suggests, because, you know, the, the first thing of the items that you read off, that you, that your committee got through, and got through very admirably, and really came up with great proposals, was a good start to get to the next steps. And I think it's only natural that, A, those people are already familiar with the projects you were discussing, and to just focus on a couple, and take them forward, especially as Mr. Ebersol said, with the real estate and development. And there are other two items, I think, we'll, we'll deal with kind of tangentially through the town manager.
Okay. So the action item that I'm hearing is to go back, reconvene the group, find out if, if they're all willing to go forward, and to propose a charter for, for what we believe we can accomplish in a relatively concise period of time.
Correct. And then come back with how many vacancies you may have.
Okay.
Because I think some people have left or resigned from their positions.
Right.
I mean, just going through these, starting with the next steps, develop the go-to-market plan and the RFP template, you know, that I would see reuse committee working through us and the town manager. Just develop consolidation plans for municipal, I mean, that's going to be the town manager, and facilities for the Town Hall here. Bottom line, cost and investment decisions, projections, that type of thing. And that's going to be reused, but that's primarily going to end up back with the town manager and us. Cross-department record management plan and process, it's town clerk, town manager, and technology, because really, the other piece of that is we really got to be looking at digitizing.
That's right.
As many of these records as we can, so that we're not pulling paper, and the departments aren't pulling paper, but they can pull up the file. And whether we can do that internally, if we need to go outside and get some cost behind that.
God bless you, Jerry Hyde, wherever you are. We're still talking about digitizing the town, town records.
And sure, and location, open meetings, I mean, that's going to be, again, town manager, facilities department, and the school committee, because I, you know, if we're going to give up this room for office space, and give it up as a meeting space, you know, we've got to decide where we're going to meet. And working with zoning, school, and all that, I mean, that should still be under reuse, but then working with planning, reaching out, you know, once we get a plan for what the land's going to look like when we separate it, as far as frontage and that type of thing, to make it all work, so.
Okay.
I mean, that's how I would break it down.
Fine.
Everybody set with that? Okay.
Store your pencil. Thank you. My pen died.
That's okay. I stole it from the chief.
Nice.
Fire department.
Okay, review open meeting law complaint. Uh, meeting law complaint, everybody should have that, and it was submitted to the AG concerning the public access cable. Did everybody review this?
Actually, it's not gone to the AG at this point, it's local at this point, the process is it goes to the town and the committee, and without a quorum, we have to talk about what that means. And then after 30 days, if it's not resolved, then it can be forwarded to the Attorney General's Office.
So it was filed with the town clerk, okay.
Right.
I apologize for the...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point out a, a small typo here, the, the date stamp on each of these says 2013, I believe it's supposed to be 2014.
Where are you, where are you looking?
On the, on all three of the first sheets.
Oh, oh, on, in the packet, I'm looking at the copy that wasn't stamped. Yes. Yes, we may want to tell the town clerk that the year has changed. Is everybody aware of this?
Yes.
Okay. Does it, does anybody want to discuss this? It's lengthy, I don't know if I want to read it into, into the record, but basically, the complaint is that meetings were held without quorums, that minutes weren't properly filed, uh, that changes to the town bylaw that governed the PAC were, were made without properly being put on agendas, that there were executive sessions, I believe, that don't fit any, uh, that don't fit the, the reasons to having an executive session. Did I mischaracterize this by anybody? I guess that, in the, in the, what action do you think the public body should take in response to your complaint? That is short enough to read, that the PAC does not have a quorum, the pattern of violation should cease, the town bylaw should be respected and followed, an opinion from the Attorney General on these violations, and whether intention, and whether intentional, might provide the Board of Selectmen- board of selectmen and other town managers some assistance. I want to say, first of all publicly, that the board of selectmen and the town manager offered open town meeting seminars regarding the laws by our town council, and we urge, not urge, we require, that people who are in all these different offices, who, any public body that meets, whether it's appointed or elected, needs to follow the open meeting law. That is the position as one member of this board, and as this board, I think, as a whole. I don't think anybody on here would say no. So, when things like this are brought to our attention, I think we need to address what the actual, um, complaint is, and the violations being alleged are, and whether they happened, and then how to correct them. Does this, how, how would this board, this is, the, the second time this violation has come before us, so how would this board like to proceed?
Well, I believe, well, I'm not sure, the vice chair hasn't, of the PAC has not officially resigned yet, but I, she intends to. The latest appointment in the complainer, the complainant in this open meeting law complaint has resigned, so there's not a quorum currently. We haven't had a quorum. We've had issues with quorums for a good long time, we've had issues with getting people involved, we've been trying to get people to sign up and join this committee for a couple of years now. It was most recently discussed when this open meeting law complaint was last brought forth. Um, you know, there's a couple of things going on with this that are of concern, I mean, if, if, the root problem is a lack of quorum, um, and we're having trouble getting people to step forward to serve in the committee, I'm not sure the value in berating those folks who did step forward does for us to attract folks. But the bottom line is, the indication from the town manager was that if, if we don't have a quorum for the committee, then this board takes over the operation and the, in the, the role of the committee. And the day-to-day operations would fall with the coordinator, I guess, at this point. So I, I think at this point, I think the best way we can get out of this is to disband this current committee, rescind the appointments, take some time to consider it, since we don't have a quorum anyway, and see if we can't start fresh.
Anybody else on the board have an opinion about that?
I agree with Mr. Matthews. I think that the, the key is the lack of quorum, I don't see a short-term resolution to that. I believe that the, uh, the manager is capable of handling the day-to-day operations, purchases, et cetera, under the supervision of the town manager, and give us an opportunity to look a little closer, understand a little better, if possible, and, and determine where to go moving forward.
Someone jumping ahead to the, the next agenda item, which is talking about the PAC bylaw, and going to town meeting and looking at quorum, I think there's several sections of the, the bylaw that should be reviewed, in addition to just plain the number, because there's other things that I think we need to talk about, what, what goes into the work and what people would want to do. But I would agree with Mr. Matthews and, and his assessment.
Right. Before I comment on Mr. Matthews' proposal, I want to just bring it back to the violation. Now, this is not the first open meeting law violation we've had in, in my tenure here, not my current tenure, but since I've been on the board. And it's unclear, it's unclear if, I believe that this is addressed to the board of selectmen, and maybe, like many things, when people don't know where to go, it gets addressed to the board of selectmen. Because I don't know the authority, I mean, we, our authority is to promote people following the open meeting law. We can make available resources so people understand what the agendas and minutes and, and executive sessions and all those things should look like, and, and how they should be followed. But certainly in an appointed committee, we have more authority, especially when we're the appointing body. But in elected areas, we don't have that authority, we can't tell the planning board or the school committee how they should run their meetings, we don't have that authority. We can, we can, you know, recommend, we can persuade, we can cajole, we can do anything we want to use, put any verb in there, but we don't have authority to say, oh, we think you did this wrong or that wrong, unless it's a clear violation. So I don't know, because it's been told to us singularly and as a body, that we need to address this, but I'm not sure how members of the board want to address the complaint first.
The reason I believe it's before us is because there's a lack of quorum on the, the PAC, and that they actually can't have a legal meeting to address it, and so therefore, as the town manager talked about, that any of the committees that we appoint would therefore come back to our jurisdiction. As far as responding on the specific facts, you know, I don't see us taking any action on those because we're, we weren't directly involved in those items, and that I, I can't see what we would do as a response, other than to let the complaint follow its path.
Right. The, the other thing I just want to point out, that usually, in other complaints that we've had, it has been, the remedy that the complainant is usually proposing is, is an, a vote, or a decision that was made, that they felt was unfair and needed to be rescinded back, either rescinded or remanded back to that body. In this case, it's just the holding of meetings, in most cases, that, uh, were at issue, and if I remember when we discussed this initially, back when the first complaint was made, that there were no real decisions in anything that was done, in the next meeting that there was a quorum, this was supposed to be remedied by a vote saying that they, with a quorum present, would approve all the decisions made up till then. I don't know if that was done or not, but, uh, I, I just, I, I just have a problem with what, what the complainant is looking for in this case, but that's my own issue. Before we go on to Mr. Matthews' proposal, I know we have members, the two remaining members of the board here, there is a third who hasn't officially resigned yet, I don't think, but I don't know if you want to comment or not. If, if, if you do, yeah, obviously, Fred, you have to come to the, the meeting.
Fred Cullen, Emma Drive. The thing that you assumed had been done, that at a subsequent meeting that we ratified the votes taken when we did not have a quorum, that did occur.
That did occur?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the ratification of votes went back of a couple of meetings, it did not go back for the entire time of the complaint.
Okay. All right, I'm going to let that stand, and I'm assuming that this will get filed, I, I don't know, I'm assuming it's going to get filed by the AG, because that is what the complainant is asking for, but, uh, we'll let that go. I think that, given the fact, this is on, not on the violation itself, but on now the makeup of the PAC, as Mr. Matthews pointed out, that there is now not a quorum, the, the bylaw sets out a committee of seven people, and now effectively, we have three, and maybe going down to two, the other member, the vice chair, uh, status is uncertain at this time, I think it was going to be earlier, and it was extended of her own volition. So I would agree that, I think that until this gets remedied, we have to remand everything, all the authorities back to the board, because they don't have a quorum, and I don't know of anybody who's put in a talent bank form to ask to be put on the board, on the committee. However, I would hesitate if people are, who are already on the committee, who wish to stay on the committee, and that's, that's really the question.
Chairman, may I have a moment?
You certainly may.
Regarding a second set of bylaws that...
Excuse me, could you identify yourself?
Lance May, 277 Island Street, Lornberg.
Thank you, Ms. May.
Regarding a second set of bylaws that was recently passed at a special town meeting that changed some of the language sent to the town from the attorney general's office. Martha Cheeseman resigned her position as chair to this committee, there were only three of us at the time, and this became known to whomever was on the board at the time, as well as the town manager. And I had asked a couple of times to our liaison, what constitutes a quorum for this committee? And in looking at the bylaws, there was a section five, a quorum. And I had asked, and I'll read that, "A presence of a simple majority of the total membership shall be necessary and sufficient to constitute a quorum for the transaction of business. Votes shall be cast by members in attendance."
Mm-hmm.
And it came back to us that those three individuals, myself and the other two, that were on the committee, would constitute that quorum to conduct the business. Now, I don't have anything in writing, but that's what we were operating under. We weren't operating under the seven or the five to conduct the business. Now, I understand there's a quorum issue at this point in time, but I wanted to point that out because we tried to get an answer on that, and we tried to follow what we thought was the right way to do it at the time. And I, I just wanted to point that out to you.
No, I appreciate that, Mr. May, and I, and just for the record, Mr. May is the chair of the, of the public access cable committee, too. I know that came up, and I want to say that since, I know the first conversation was had, and I know that that was the operating principle that we were, that, that both the town, as a capital T, and your committee were operating under. So, in, in reading this complaint, I'm not taking a position that any of the allegations are true or not true, and so I don't want the, the membership to be identified that I, I think you purposefully went or skirted the law, so I just wanted to be clear about that. However, since that has come up, as you know, in our workshop meeting, we asked for an official interpretation by our town council at that time, who indicated to us that the language of quorum is clear in Massachusetts state law, that it's not sitting membership, but actual total potential membership that is needed to be taken into account when identifying or establishing a quorum. So, right.
That was in October.
Right.
Of this past fall.
Right.
Part of this complaint refers back to minutes or meetings that were held in 2011.
Right.
When there was a different board of selectmen at the time, a different liaison from the board of selectmen to the PAC, and this discussion, I was told, took place between that liaison and either members of the board and/or the town manager.
Right.
So that we operated under the guidelines that we thought were established to be able to operate. So there's no malice or, or forethought in terms of what we were trying to do on behalf of the town.
And I appreciate that. Thank you. So, getting back to what I was saying about the current members, if somebody, I, I am not willing to just say, hey, we're vacating every slot on there, if people want to serve on it, and, and they want to continue, that's fine, and they'd be up for reappointment in their normal slot, I'm, I, that's the only thing that I would change in Mr. Matthews' statement, that I think, from now until town meeting, when I think the next item on the agenda, as Mr. Ebersol said, will be proposed bylaw changes to the PAC bylaw, that will change the number of total membership, make it easier for us to get a quorum, number one, changing how members get appointed, because in there, as was pointed out in our workshop earlier, late last year, the PAC membership gets to select people to recommend to the board of selectmen to appoint, but obviously, in a condition where there's no quorum, they can't do that, so then it becomes a whole nightmare, and no other committee has that authority. They can recommend people informally, but the board of selectmen should have the full appointment power outside of the board, of the committee itself. So what I would recommend is that we, just to amend what Mr. Matthews said, is that the board of selectmen take over through the town manager on the, the approval of the program coordinator, who would continue to do the programming and directing of the programming. We would work with the existing members of, of the PAC, getting their input about revisions to the bylaw, try to get that passed, and then come town meeting, get new membership involved, even, even possibly getting talent bank forms before then, in anticipation of the bylaw being changed. We don't appoint anybody till the bylaw would be changed.
Mr. Chairman, I think part of the problem, and all due respect, I think that the current membership on the committee is what is limiting the volunteers to the committee. When talking with various people, they have said they would not get on, on, with the current membership. In corporate world and some other worlds, we would ask, uh, new administration, ask everybody resign and reapply for appointment, and be considered along with other people at that point. Frankly, I, I think that, that this is, in stepping back from the PAC, just generally regarding committees, we've had some discussions as we've developed our policies. The town manager noted that the appointment process is one of the most important powers that the selectmen have for appointing people to committees. I think we need to be clear on what we expect of committees. I think previous boards have allowed the committees to, to be on their own and not report back, we've started a process of, of having people report to us. I think only with a change like that will people start to reapply for various committees, and then we can look at the, the qualifications as a whole at that point.
Only because I don't, I, I never feel comfortable letting an allegation, or a, a assumption like that, or an assertion, like you made just dangle there, I'm going to ask you, is, is your feeling that people won't join because of the current membership, is it, is it anecdotally based? I mean, or is there, I mean, do we have...
I have talked to, I have talked to three people, and they said they will not get on the committee as long as the current membership is there. And I've talked with past members who have said the same thing.
Anybody have any other?
You know, it's uncomfortable, this conversation.
Mm-hmm.
But obviously, we've got a problem here, um, because this is a longstanding problem. And I think we need to change how we're approaching this problem, and changing this, how we're approaching this committee, and I think a fresh start would help us achieve that.
I think, just practically speaking, uh, I wasn't sure how it was going to work when you kind of talked about it, you know, the, the responsibility would revert to the selectmen under the direction of the town manager and the manager of PAC, with some number of former committee members that don't make a quorum, so I, you know...
Let me, let me explain, just, what I'm saying is that the revisions of the bylaw, we would ask for their input as, as remaining members, that, not, not for the day-to-day running, because they can't do it, physically, you know, statu- 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 statu-
to rescind the appointments. There's, there's a process within the, our policies that we would have to actually get somebody off that committee. I would ask that the town manager investigate that at this point. I think the fact that there's a lack of quorum, and there's no positions, and if we have the day-to-day operation with the town manager and the program coordinator, that's effectively rescinding the appointment, because they can't act, they can't meet, that type of thing. So, I just procedurally, while I might support that, the end result of the resignation, I'm not sure if we can actually do that tonight.
Well, I'm not, I'm not looking to do that tonight, anyway. We're just talking about that, and we would want to get, we'd want to get the, the clarification from town council through, through the town manager, what the authority is. I would ask the, the members who are here, if they would like, if they would, I mean, if they have an opinion about, that they would share with us about what they think the, you know, the, the next step should be. Again, I think you guys were in it, I'm not, it's, it's just a request, so you, obviously, you can choose not to comment or, or share that, that's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, it, it is de facto, that right now, that, that nothing can be acted on. So, at least as far as the people getting paid who are doing the, the programming, and who are doing the camera work and doing, running the equipment, those hours would have to be approved by the board, the town manager at this point going forward.
Mr. Chairman, what I was going to say is that I, I agree with Mr. Matthews in that it is uncomfortable, and I don't believe we've done enough work on our board policies around this to say that we're rescinding anything. I, I think that what we're doing is, is saying, we don't have a quorum until we have a quorum. We're disbanding the PAC, if you will, but we're not rescinding anybody's appointment to it. At the same time, I think that when it, when it comes time to, to, to look at the bylaws, to look at how we move forward, and if, if the decision is made to continue with a PAC committee, and, and we set some number of, of members, and the board has say in selecting those members, that's probably the appropriate time for that discussion.
Okay, that's fair enough. I mean, I, I, I think we have a problem, too. I think one of the problems I find, and I have found for, I don't know, over five years with this, whenever this committee was formed, was why is it that we can't get it filled? It seems to be working with interesting equipment, dealing with programming on two different channels, there's a lot of chance for how to shape the channels, how to shape the programming, getting involved from a, from, you know, a high school's student standpoint, how to get involved with the equipment. I mean, there, I would imagine it would be a very popular committee, and it never has been. So, I think the problem is, we have to really investigate why that is true.
And I, I think that, that point that you just made is, is this an action committee versus a policy committee versus a committee that oversees volunteers? I think that, and we can talk about that, I would suggest that we, we set that as a future agenda item for the, the discussion about the, the bylaw change, because I think that that's, that the discussion about what we would expect this committee to do as a committee versus the work that comes out of the committee. When this committee was first established, there wasn't any paid staff. There's a difference. Once you start getting paid staff, and you have, you know, the, the concept of volunteer, so things have changed since this bylaw was established. A lot of work was done by committee members as if they were the employee, and that has since changed. So, therefore, is the committee a hands-on, you're going to do camera work versus a committee that's going to do policy, and then you have other people do that? I think generally, we should have that discussion.
Okay, so, I think, again, just to recap, de facto, following the law, there is no quorum, so that, that the committee cannot make, cannot hold a meeting, and cannot make any further decisions on anything until the quorum is met. In the meantime, I think it has always been our intention, as it was when we met with the committee in a workshop, to change and modify the bylaw, which leads us into our next agenda item, which is reviewing the bylaw. I think that there are several things that probably are not going to be terribly contentious in, in changes. I've identified three or four changes.
Can you have the most current bylaw?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The one in the PAC, it's still the old one?
Yes, I have the most current one. Just in a nutshell, I'll open it up, what the five would be. So, the first one is the one that's been, we've talked about probably the most, and that is changing the number of membership from seven to five, which put it more in line with most other committees, anyway, with the exception of the Finance Committee. Five just seems like a, a number that we can attract, and serves only to have, you know, three people available to make a quorum at that point. Change number two would be in vacancies, and basically shorten that one sentence to be vacancies, vacancies shall be filled by the Lunenburg Board of Selectmen. That's it. Removing the, on the recommendation of that whole clause. Suggestion number four would be under Article 6, under Officers, Section 4, vacancy of officers, on the first sentence, just removing with the approval of the Lunenburg Board of Selectmen. So, any vacancy may be filled at a regular or special meeting of PAC. They can, they should be able to fill their own officers. And then second sentence, they're just missing a, because this is under the Officer section, it should say, she'll be for the expired term of the previous incumbent officer. It should end with officer, because otherwise, it looks like, if you read it quickly, it would be for any vacancy. And then the last one would be an additional section of Article 9, which would be annual budget. This is the way I've worded it, I'm certainly up for discussion. But PAC will submit an annual budget to the town manager for inclusion in the annual town meeting warrant. It shall be due when all the other department budgets are required to be submitted by the town manager, either by request and/or charter requirement. Said budget may be fully debated, discussed, and amended at the annual town meeting. So, basically, we need an inclusion of a budget so that any expenditure of money, even on, even on revol- not revolving funds, but even on things like the sewer commission...
Enterprise.
Enterprise funds, thank you, I lost the word. Even those are included, and I think we need to include those. Probably, there should be an additional part of here as a, a financial statement as well, not only just a budget, but what's coming in and what's... Because, of course, these revenues that are coming in come from the contract from the cable, cable company. So, those would be my four suggestions in amending the bylaw.
Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with any of them. I, I have two additional ones I'd like to be considered. One is Article 3, principal office shall be in the Lunenburg Town Hall, you know, as a result of building reuse and everything else. I don't know why we need to state that, it should be wherever it should be.
Right. Okay.
And the other is a tough one, because I know we're...
So, you're, you're suggesting the removal of that?
Exactly.
Okay.
The other one's a tough one, because I know that we're trying to attract as many people as possible, but I've always felt that it was important to have, if not everybody, at least a majority of the committee have cable TV, because, I mean, now that we're putting things on YouTube, it's a little less critical, but there was, there was a time when there were quite a few members of the committee that didn't, didn't have cable TV and didn't, weren't able to kind of view the end product. And maybe that's just a workshop item as we get, we get further down the line.
Okay.
You can certainly encourage it or whatever, just to leave yourself some flexibility. The sewer commission has that same issue currently. All five members, granted elected, none of them are within the sewered areas of town. They're within sewer district, so they, they...
Yes, I remember asking that, the last time we appointed somebody to fill a vacancy. It was your vacancy, actually.
That's right, it was, when I left.
Any other suggestions?
I think those are excellent. I think in general, Mr. Chairman, I, I try not to agree with reducing the size of committees, but I, given, given the current situation, I think five is appropriate.
I, I, I had a problem with seven to begin with...
Right.
...back when, but...
I think another committee, we talked about going from five to three, and I don't, I don't favor that.
No. Well, I'll tell you why three is a problem, by the way. Three is a problem because of open meeting law, because if you talk to one person, you've broken the open meeting law, which is why the Board of Selectmen, when the charter was adopted, really needed to be changed from three to five, because otherwise, it would presume that you never spoke to anybody else on the board, ever.
So, I think we're going to need to update the mission statement, and maybe give some thought to that, because it's really kind of vague. And I'd also like to get a copy of the policy manual, as identified in Article 9, Section 1.
That is, of course, the core. When I read this, you know, the first time, and then again, in, in making these recommendations on, on modifications, that's really the core of this, what, what the thing is, having a policy manual. And if you look at other towns that have it, you know, their cable access committees are very active in saying who has access, how do you get access, what do you have to be trained on to get access? I mean, it's very, very clear.
It's, it's my understanding that there are some policies, but there's no policy manual, per se.
All right, so we should, whatever we have, we should try to get tied together. I will, when the town manager returns, I will discuss these with her.
And then this would be one of the items for, on the town meeting warrant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Either of you like to add anything to this, or have recommendations of your own?
Not, we're meeting not tonight.
Okay, that's fine. And if you want to, you can send it in writing to us, that's fine. Okay, warrants, we have a payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $298,651.66. Action file issues. Anybody have any action file issues? I have one that was sent by a resident on Flat Hill Road, basically refocusing or re-calling our attention to a building that we know is in dilapidated condition and has asbestos in it, and they're saying that the building is truly on the verge of collapse. I'm going to try to go see it this weekend again. Problem is, according to this account, is if it falls in, because it has asbestos, it actually may go in the stream or in the water supply down there, so...
What's the location?
It's the one that we've talked about, I, I don't have the exact address on here, but it's the one we've talked about, and we, and according to the town manager, who I spoke with today, or actually not spoke with, corresponded with today, said, we do have money in the budget, and it's just a matter of getting everything together to get it taken care of. So, it's the one we talked about.
The one we own that we need to dispose of?
Right. Yes.
My understanding was that if we, if we tear it down, then that destroys the ability to rebuild, and the hope was that we're going to sell it, and so we talked about, you know, a year ago. And if we sold it standing, it could be renovated, rebuilt by somebody, whereas if it gets knocked down, that opportunity's gone, so it just becomes raw land at that point, with low to no value.
But it also becomes a hazard, I mean, it's, it's...
Oh, it's, it's a hazard, it's been a hazard, it's just, you know...
We've torn down buildings in this town for a whole lot less than that, in fact, even ones that are sketchy at best that we tore down. So, I mean, this is caved in, I understand that, and, and the resident points out, and I'll share this with you, I didn't, I didn't forward it, but I will make a copy, I'll have the town manager make a copy, so everybody sees it, but supposedly, there's been interest, according to this resident who's reported this, that there's been interest in somebody buying it, even for anything. You know, the fact that somebody, it's a real sliver of land, and yes, it can be grandfathered in because it's a foundation, but the size of the, of the home, or the size of the, the structure, it's questionable whether anybody would want to build on the same, you have to build on the same footprint, so...
My, my understanding, and I, was that once you take a building down, you have two years to do it under current zoning, but that may be different for a building that's not been occupied. That may be part of the problems, it's been unoccupied for so long, so... I mean, we, we have to respond to a health hazard, but if we can do a quick, upon the town manager's return, a real quick request for responses for sale of the property, if we can fast-track this, because didn't town meeting authorize us to do this?
I believe so.
I believe so, yeah, I believe so, yep. So, all right.
The other, the other property was the West Street, West Street, Lemanster Road, Old Town Garage.
Right, yeah.
That one, too.
The Old Town Highway Building. Okay, so I'll, I'll have her copy this. She actually received this as well. It's, it got copied to her, so I'll have her send it to everybody. Any other action file issues? Okay, committee reports, Board of Health.
No report.
Building reuse, we talked about tonight, Capital Planning Committee.
I'll take the next two together. The Capital Planning Committee is going to present their capital plan to the Finance Committee that's coming Thursday night.
Twofer, all right. Nicely done.
And that's the, that's the first of the department reviews.
That's a...
Beginning Thursday night, and it's, the, the rest of the finance meetings leading up to the budget is, they're all, they're all planned to be televised.
That is, if there's a meeting on Thursday night, yes.
Right. Correct.
Library Board of Trustees.
No report.
Okay. Paul is not here, so no Planning Board and MPO, PAC we just talked about, School Advisory Committee on Acceptance and Diversity.
No additional reports since last week.
Can we change that to SACAD or something, something that's a little shorter?
What, what's good about that committee, it's a limited, time limited, it will be done by the end of school year, so that's really...
School Committee.
Uh, no report.
School...
Uh, School Committee, just a quick one, are, are they planning on doing whatever needs to be done to transfer those properties for this town meeting?
No.
No.
I've talked with this, the School Committee, they won't, they, since the superintendent is actually in the building, and they're actually using the Brooks House for some school use, they have not transferred that property, but they're willing to work with the town on timing of when that actually needs to be, so...
They did vote previously that they would transfer it...
Okay.
...when they, when it was actually surplus.
Being real optimistic, if we got an offer on something, we could move relatively quickly, I would assume. quickly, I would assume.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean...
Yeah, okay.
They need the Passios for two years for the heating system, as you know, so...
I know the Passios, right.
So, is it the Brooks House?
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
That's right.
Yep.
The furnace is there.
School building committee.
Our meeting tomorrow night, the designer has started lining up the various contracts, hazardous material, site, engineering, that type of thing, and we're going to be reestablishing a working group to go through, line by line, the design process and the, some of the bid process.
Excellent. Sewer commission.
They're meeting tonight?
Excellent. And Mass Broadway, we're going to hear from the IT director next week. Obviously, no town manager reports or department reports, and I would ask if the board, anybody, board has, member has any further public comment? Anybody in the public have any public comment? So then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We will see you next week, February 18th, 2014. Thank you and good night.
Good night, everyone.
And go Team USA.